I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I need a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Make the motion we approve the agenda for April fourteenth, twenty fourteen as presented.
Will call both please.
Baldwin?
Yes.
McAdie?
Yes.
Maury?
Yes.
Siroli?
Yes.
Horton?
Yes. Next on the agenda would be approval of the minutes at the regular council meeting on March tenth.
Motion. Minutes is read. There's.
Motion made. Support?
Support.
Baldwin?
Yes.
McAdie?
Yes.
Horton?
Yes.
Siroli?
Yes.
Horton?
Yes. Also, we have, uh, we need approval for the minutes of the April first meeting.
I'd make a motion for something. Support.
Which makes support?
Baldwin?
Yes.
McAdie?
Yes.
Maury?
Yes.
Siroli?
Yes.
Horton?
Yes.
And also approve of the minutes of April first of the special meeting they had. We have it recorded in the calendar.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
I support.
Will call both please.
Baldwin?
Yes.
McAdie?
Yes.
Maury?
Yes.
Siroli?
Yes.
Horton?
Yes.
I need the closed session minutes. Okay.
Will you sign these?
No, just, I just.
I can speak.
Make that motion.
Support.
Baldwin?
Yes.
McAdie?
Yes.
Maury?
Yes.
Siroli?
Yes.
Horton?
Yes.
I'll also make a motion to approve the bills and transfers from March first, two thousand fourteen to March thirty-first, two fourteen. Support. Is there any comments?
I see the six hundred dollars for the state fee for the dam permit. That's something that's reasonable, what we normally would have to pay for.
No, it's the second payment total of the house now.
Any other questions?
No.
If that, I made a motion. Support.
Baldwin?
Yes.
McAdie?
Yes.
Maury?
Yes.
Siroli?
Yes.
Horton?
Yes. So, entertain public comments directed to the board. We like to hold it down to three minutes. Sometimes we can go a little longer, depending what the scenario is. Most time, it's just comments from members of the audience and/or village members. So we'd like to keep it down. Comments are fine. We've got a large number of things here on the, on the agenda tonight. So please raise your hand if you want to make a comment, just go up to the microphone. Do so.
It's Diane Frederick, seven four seven six, Tarahquor. This is the third time I've turned this up. It is the Garret Toota parcel, thirty-seven lot, um, Tarahquor in Fairview Hills. Um, I've mentioned this over times, that it's really unbuildable. It's been, uh, two years underwater, six times now. Without the snow that melted, it's underwater again. Um, at some point, it was suggested that maybe a building inspector would look at it, or to say, hey, it's something we can build on. Right now, it's good for three things: a houseboat, a bike pond, or your garden. Um, but, the parcel's been sold. I talked to the other people that bought, but he wouldn't have find the person that bought that lot. And I'm just giving you guys one more chance to maybe take money back and don't sell it because if you build on it, it's not going to work. And I'm going to let them know that I let you guys know. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, if that, uh, first thing and next thing on the agenda would be unfinished business. That'd be the Jesse County Sheriff's Department report. I think we've all looked at that. It's kind of amazing to me how busy those guys can be in a small community, but there's things going on that we just can't believe sometimes. So if there is things going on, and, uh, I don't see anything big time that's going to do anything any much personally, but, um, again, just pay attention to what's happening in our area, so forth and so on. Uh, anybody here have a question about it? About the safety report? I think we've all looked at it.
Just a comment, there is, uh, there is a lot going on.
Yeah, there is.
Most of it is informal, uh, accidents, uh, thefts, few thefts, and, well, unfortunately, there's one, looks like one serious problem, but, uh, they're out there.
Minister. Uh, I'm of course, the street administrator.
The grader will be back on the road soon, the weather permits. Uh, we had two pieces broken welds from the winter, weren't able to use it last week, couldn't get it welded this Saturday. I came in, we got it welded. We're scheduled for street sweeping this week, and I tell you, it won't be tomorrow. We're going to do all the streets. They're supposed to be in sometime this week, but tomorrow will not be a good day. But, uh, we're gonna, the weatherman just promised we're gonna break the record. One more, if we got this far, I guess we can get one more shot of snow. Not that we want it, but, uh, it, uh, so, we would have liked to grade it last week, but, uh, we just didn't dare try it where it was broke, so. She's old, we've got a few more things to repair on it, but it, it's workable right now, and those can, uh, go as we get on, but, uh, that's all I have. We're supposed to get gravel and maybe the end of the week too. That's been on a two-week hold, so.
Okay, nine eleven. Anything? Water noise?
Um, Genesee County is having a rate increase. Um, we'll have a resolution next month just to pass it through for the sewer. Thirteen percent, thirteen point five percent increase.
How many present?
Thirteen point five.
Uh, Parks and Rec?
Ricky might want to talk about the meeting that we had with, uh, with Mrs. Vick off the park.
Yeah, last, uh, was that Thursday?
Thursday.
Thursday. Um, Mrs. Vick was, her and, um, Doug and I sat down, and we talked about some of the things, about, uh, the park. Uh, she brought some i- some ideas to the table. I tried to convince her that, uh, some of the ideas were good, but not to get too excited. Number one, we're, the parks, or the, the park area really hasn't really been on the agenda for quite a long time. Uh, we do not have a budget set up for the parks, um, that amounts to a whole, a whole lot. And it's going to take time to do some of the things that, that she would like. Some of them are very good, and some of them were fine, you know. The park has been there quite a long time, and, uh, the population, the village is getting larger. Uh, there are people that use it for a number of things. But anyway, it's something that I'm sure the, uh, in time, the council will look at and, uh, entertain someone's latest ideas possible. But in the very end, it's going to be the council's responsibility to move with the ideas, do some changes for the betterment of the park. It's in a great location, middle of downtown Goodrich. We do have a waterway next to it, which is something that a lot of parks do not have. So there's things that we can do with that. There's a lot of things we can do at that park. And, uh, the more things that can be done for the people that live in the village, and of course, you're going to get people that live outside the village enjoying it, that's the American way. Uh, just so everybody knows, it's something that, uh, over time, it'll be looked at and, uh, probably formed a, have a budget for it, to do certain things. And you'd like to have, uh, some millionaire just walk in and says, well, do what you want, but that's not going to happen, I don't think, unless all you folks start buying lottery tickets. Everybody with fifty bucks to get a hundred people, think about it. Okay? Just a comment.
Well, one of the things that we talked about was fundraising, and Wooljo's is, uh, willing to do some fundraising in May, but they need to know that we're serious. Um, and, uh, they've got to get their advertising together, they've got to get, publish their brochures and whatnot. And regardless of what we do with the park, it's a good way to get some money into coffers. And, uh, what they're, what they usually do is if you buy there within a two-week span, and you tell them you're from Village and Goodrich, they split the profit, give to the park. It's, it's better to get something rather than nothing.
True.
But they need to know that we're serious. And, uh, that would involve passing a resolution to start a campaign. Uh, whether we do it, uh, whether we're already doing it, or whether we just make this official, I think it's a good idea to pass this resolution and just say, yes, we're going forward with some fundraising. In time, it may take time, but, uh, if they're willing to do fundraising for us, they're not going to start unless we officially take on a campaign. Need comments?
Well, camp, okay, I forget what camp pronounced. The campaign is something that we need to do, then that's, uh, we can look at it. I've talked to Jackie about it.
Well, there's a problem with waiting, though, because they're, they're cranking up the advertising now.
You don't know, the park is going to be open this year, and I'm, I'm assuming that they would want the money spent pretty quickly.
Good question.
Yeah, I don't know.
Until we know what's going on with the dam, the park's closed.
It's closed? You can't start fundraising for it, though?
I have no idea. I don't know why it will be open this year.
There's a time, there's a time to jump in for the fundraising. If we miss it, we miss it.
Well, if you, if we do open a fundraiser, or try to implement one, it's got to be a legal, legal thing, and we'd have to open an account for the fundraiser so we know where the dollars are.
Well, we could do that. I, I don't, I don't see why the hesitation. Let's, let's get to fundraising while we can.
The only thing, the only thing I would caution is that, as long as there's nothing definitive of saying, this is what we're going to do, and this is what we're going to use the money for, uh, then I don't really have an issue with it, but, because if it's just there without saying, well, you know, now that it's there, I would like to have this and this and this done, when the dam issue has not been put to bed yet.
Yeah.
So that's the only thing I would be cautious of, on that.
We do need to buy handicap accessible tables, if I got information about today, they're two hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Want to do a fundraising to, I'm dedicated to purchasing some handicap accessible tables. That would be a good item to.
Good idea. Good idea. I, we, you know, I would, you're.
I mean, we could get those, we're not improving the park right now, but.
If you could purchase them.
Well, I think anytime people want to help fund, uh, the park with a scenario like that, and no one says that we're going to use the money to, um, build a new parking lot or something, you know, we've got a need for it, then I think they need to know that, and know that when they're going to give their dollars to us, there's a reason and a need that we'll fulfill with those monies.
That's right.
And that's basically what you just said.
Well.
That and the, uh, the handicap, uh, is it tables or some type?
Picking chairs.
Well, with that in mind, I'd like to make a motion to, to restart this campaign. As a matter of fact, may I?
I don't see a reason why not.
If I make a motion to begin a fundraising campaign for Wooljo's Goodrich Park Renovations. It's a broad statement.
Support. Support.
To be dedicated to.
Yeah, dedicated to a particular aspect, which would be the benches?
I didn't hear the rest of your.
Uh, I made it, I made it kind of broad. It said park renovations. I think that way that you, if you wanted to use it for something else, you wouldn't be tied down.
And the council will have the final determination of that fund.
I would picture, yeah, we would, yeah. In the end, we got to say, okay, here's the money, you can buy these tables, so.
Okay.
Yep, that's a great idea.
You will take care of it with the Wooljo's on Doug?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good point.
You can contact us.
Was that the one?
I will be there.
That's the one?
Actually, they, they'll do it in both, but mostly Ortonville. They're publicly being in the, in the citizen, and in their normal advertising, whatever that is. And a lot of advertising right at the site, flyers on the counter. So we may get money from people living on Oxford. Can't tell.
Okay, roll call both, please.
Who's supported? Mark.
Yes.
McAdie?
Yes.
Maury?
Yes.
Siroli?
Yes.
Horton?
Yes. Anything for code enforcement, Jackie?
No.
Okay, administration, I've got about six numbers underlined here for you, so.
Um, it's budget time. We need to set up budget work time workshops, and if you just want to set up any committees, you need to be thinking about doing that. Budget has been adopted, set a meeting in June. I don't have the tax information, the state revenue money, um, that's going to be allocated in the, um, road money that's going to be allocated. But we can still start working on other, other aspects of the budget. We need a second.
Well, here's going to last, now we get that information, to set up a budget meeting?
No, we set everybody now, you want to?
We can set the meetings up, and all she's got to do is add that information when she gets up.
There's a lot, lot of things, Chuck, on the budget, that you've all asked questions about during the course of the year. It's time to answer.
Okay. Any particular date for you to?
Down tomorrow, I'm not here.
Tomorrow, I won't be here either.
We could do it anyway.
I'm going to go film a million tomorrow. Well, once you, uh, just send us an email or whatever, we'll get it together, find out when everybody can be here.
What, do you want to do it in daytime or the nighttime?
Yeah, I'll do it daytime.
Ten o'clock?
Good.
Ten o'clock, five.
Good.
Nine o'clock.
Set that for you.
Wanted to cheer her up.
Um, does anybody going on vacation the next couple of weeks?
I'm going from the twenty-third till the twenty-eighth.
How about Thursday, the first, May?
Thursday, May?
Ten o'clock. That's the first one.
That's Thursday?
Thursday, May first, at ten AM.
July, May, no?
November?
Yes. That's right here.
Yep.
Okay. Underneath the administrative, anything else? We got the dam to talk about, I guess. Okay. I see it's still standing.
Um, I don't have any more information on it. We're waiting for the DEQ to let us know when their twenty-day period is up, and after they've reviewed any comments that might come in, and then we can start working on it, to get their equipment here.
We have the permit or no?
No, they're, they're still going through their twenty-day period. And then they have to review everything, and then get back the people if they need to get back to street, so. They have money.
Okay.
It shouldn't be too much longer, but we figured probably the middle of May anyway.
Anything for sidewalks? Okay. Village property.
Still waiting for it to come back from the planning, just to sign the paper.
Yeah, I see the state road property, so you have some information on that.
Um, yeah. Mr. Corey, um, received his court order, we shall have a copy of. He's made his application for his roof. See, he's not done anything to his roof, yeah. But he has until the end of May to get everything out the list, and then if he doesn't get it done, go back.
Is, he starts it or complete it? Complete it at the end of May?
Later than May thirty, he shall do all the things, A, B, and C.
Okay. That's a better structure, you've had a long time, for sure.
So he's going to do it himself.
He's going to do it himself, isn't he?
Good luck with that.
Might end up being inspected.
Yeah. Maybe on a first-name basis, but an inspector, he can do it himself. Okay, do we like drains? We have here this evening. Would you like to make a comment?
Um, I met with the engineer this afternoon, uh, and that went quite well, giving some information. I'm probably, well, I know I'm going to be doing my calculations differently. They, they all use modeling programs. I like to do calculations by hand. One, because that's how I was trained. Two, I don't trust models, because they tend to leave things out and be as accurate as possible. I want to make sure I do all the calculations properly. Um, I fully understand where they were coming from, um, but we'll be able to meet the county standards. I never expected that we wouldn't be able to meet the county standards.
Okay.
Um, I'm in the process of putting together a flyer, something that you can give to citizens, and you'll be able to print it out on your own, so that won't happen easily. You'll just have an e-copy of it, you can click it and print it, send it to people to be copied, so that way if anybody has some questions. Um, I've also been investigating a couple of potential grants. There's one that is a economic development grant that, um, is, that works about regarding, um, infrastructure, and since this qualifies as infrastructure, it's being used in other cities, um, in the United States to help with some of their funding for the infrastructure. And then I'm also looking at some other smaller grants, because that one has, um, a, a match requirement, so the way that they're doing it is getting other small grants to do the match. Um, so that's looking very hopeful, and, um, there's something else I want to mention, um, on meeting.
Golf course meeting?
Yeah, we're, well, we're going to be meeting, we met with the golf course, the other public isn't aware of that. We met with golf course, we looked at everything. I reviewed all the different properties and everything, so I have a much better idea than I had, and it's very doable. It's not nearly as horrible as I thought it was going to be. If I was a person hitting flooding, I fully understand, um, why it would be horrible no matter what, um, but I think it's, it's a very doable project. Um, there are some places that are just bad places to put a house, and there's, um, going to be some things that we can do, and it's probably going to be a trial by fire. Let's see how much this takes care of, now what do we have to deal with, now what do we have to deal with? So it's not going to be, um.
Just value capture.
Yeah, it's going to be, there's going to have to be some creativity involved with it. Um, we're planning on going up to meet, well, we're going to go to the green infrastructure, um, conference, and then we're talking about what date to go meet with Mr. Lindeman and take a look at the tower gardens. And the fortunate aspect about that is that they've actually done a couple of golf courses in Lansing as well, with the green infrastructure. So even though I have an idea in my head about how I want, you know, what I think would be a successful way to do that, it's going to be good to see what they've done, what their trial and error has done, um, just see how much they like their design and, you know, their design, you know?
And that one in particular, I think, had, you know, the golf course green infrastructure been implemented in Open County for a while, but that one, I believe, has a big hydrology component, you know, from, from a, from a retention standpoint.
Yeah, yeah. Um, one more thing. And I don't remember who it was, but, um, yeah, I'm feeling very positive about everything. I think that, um, the meeting with the grant commissioner went significantly better than I, I was expecting. All kinds of fire and brimstone and resistance, and he was, he actually asked much better than what I had anticipated, so I felt very good about the whole meeting, and I think that he's doing his due diligence and saying the things he needs to say. Um, he's got rules he has to follow, and I understand where they're coming from. But I have a very positive feeling about this, and I think that, um, you know, there are other individuals who have different interpretations of Public Act forty, and it's not necessarily something that is a barrier completely as we move forward. So that's something else that I'm investigating. Oh, I know what you're saying. I've got calls placed into project managers of some of the bigger green infrastructure projects around the United States. I'm just kind of waiting for responses, and I've been out of power, like a lot of people, but, um, hopefully I'll be hearing back from some of those people, and basically questioning about what their maintenance costs are, what they, what they would do differently to reduce maintenance costs, um, that sort of thing. So trying to just find out a little bit more about what some of the issues have been regarding maintenance around the country, and how they've best been dealt with, so that we can reduce that number, because that was something that the grant commissioner was concerned about.
Did the grant guys speak to a timetable from their perspective, or they totally say, okay, whatever the grant timetable is that?
They, they want, they want us to give them a timetable, so that's one of the things that I'm looking at, is to determine what our timetable will be for planning and then implementation.
Good shotgun, I'll say. So, keep Mister Wright informed of what's going on, too, that'd help a lot.
Absolutely.
And, uh, we'll kind of go from there. Appreciate your work.
Well, in addition to that, we're going up to the, uh, conference, eighth and ninth. If anyone wants to speak about it, or?
She touched on it. Yeah.
On the eighth and ninth, no, she talks about meeting with the.
Yeah, just, I did kind of mention that there's a, on the, the eighth and ninth, there's a green infrastructure conference. It's open to the public. Anybody who's interested, I highly recommend going, you'll learn a lot. Um, there's going to be some great speakers there, and, um, I know I'm going on the eighth, and I think some members are going to try and go, um, at least one of the days.
We're going, we're, we're signed up.
Okay.
Some of the councilmen are signed up for the eighth and ninth.
Okay.
And as you say, it was rather interesting who was going to be there, and the topics. Benefits of green infrastructure, linking water strategy to green infrastructure, economics of green infrastructure. Presenters are the U.S. EPA, Michigan DEQ Water Resources, and Michigan Department of Natural Resources. Will be part of the program. Many exhibitors involved in green infrastructure will also be in attendance. So there's a, at the end of Congress, there's a break area, we can go and speak to these other companies that are attending, or sponsoring it, really.
Yeah, it's very exciting. It's a big paradigm shift, and store water management, giving out natural resources. Kind of cool, that even the state is really out, you know, resources to get people to do it.
Yeah, this has been going on in the rest of the United States for a while now. Michigan's, Michigan's just a little bit slower to the party, so.
That was a good question.
I don't know if he's going or not. Did he say whether or not he was? No?
Yeah, nudge, nudge. Yes, yes.
Our next on the agenda is a video agreement.
I have this paper that has. Yes, Senator. Sandy back here, doing the videotaping. This is his proposal to do our videotaping. He would be putting it on YouTube and our website. So we're looking for your input on whether or not you want to have meetings continue to be taped and accept this proposal. If you have any questions? Can I ask him?
Have we seen you? Have we seen their work?
Have you seen his work?
I have seen his work before. He's a motion picture. The gentleman right here.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
I have, the last one I haven't completed. I have not uploaded it yet, though. I'll have that uploaded tonight, that's what I'm telling you.
So if anybody had any questions or concerns, and you want to approve this proposal?
I make a motion, we approve the proposal from P.S. Sandy Sheldon.
I'll support.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Bankby?
Yes.
Maury?
Yes.
Thurlow?
Yes.
Horton?
Yes.
The ordinance for construction code is not ready yet, so.
Okay, on your new business, you have budget amendments.
Actually, for the winter that we've had, we're not doing too bad. The, as you know, the general fund rents out the equipment that we own to the major and minor roads. So what it actually does is goes around in a circle. They pay the general fund money to rent it. General fund transfers money when necessary into both of those accounts. So it increased our revenue in general fund from five sixty-nine to forty-two to five ninety-eight, five oh nine, just because of the rental of the equipment. If we go to page two. If anybody has any questions on these, these are just some things that need to be adjusted right now. The next budget amendment that we have will be a little bit more in-depth, because hopefully we'll know what we're gonna do with the dam letting. The dam, fifty thousand dollars, give or take, is not amended into this budget at this point. So as you can see, life and disability, they've changed the tolls online, particularly going from part-time to full-time. Office maintenance contract, agent fees is a new item that we're separating out some of the fees that we pay for different, like the ICMA retirement program, that goes in there, other fees that we pay for some of the services that we get. On page three, printing and publishing went up. The planner we had approved, working on the parks and rents plan and the master plan earlier this year, so that's amending that number. We had to buy the server at the last social meeting, so that amended the equipment for the administrative. Same thing with Pats, license, disability. After a certain number of years with the village, you're entitled to that benefit, so that's what that represents. Going on to page four, I didn't take the entire milk on spraying out, just in case we're able to fix the dam real quick and get the water back in there, and we need to do a fall spraying. It will probably all end up coming out of here, because it would have to be done before the middle of June, and I don't, I don't know if that would happen, but I left some in there for this particular time. With the winter we've had, again, gas and oil increased by two thousand dollars this year, not only because we used a lot more, but the price of gas was up, plus we had one extra person driving the vehicle. So that used a little bit more gas. Property maintenance and repair, that went up, three thousand dollars. Shop equipment, five hundred dollars. We had to get five hearts for that broom that we purchased and a couple of other things. Code enforcement wages, I took two thousand dollars out of that. I don't think that Dave will get up to his fifty-seven sixty by the end of this fiscal year. Going on to page five. Had to increase drains at large, six thousand dollars, because of the drain projects that happened over in Fairview or Farrell Drive. That will be a five-year amount that the village will be paying for on that project. Continuing on to page six. In the beginning, we had thirteen thousand dollars in general fund of revenue that, or I mean, expenses that didn't deduct from the revenue, and now we have twenty-four thousand. General funds during. Major and minor roads, I'm sure that you heard that our governor gave everybody an allocation of funds based on the regular formula that we have, the number of roads and the population. So major and minor roads each got thirty-six hundred and fifty dollars additional money that has to be used on winter maintenance. I didn't take long to use up.
Winter maintenance? Use up, we didn't know. Now we know what he knows. Use up for flowers tomorrow, right? Salt, flowering, apples.
Major road expenses. This is wages for routine wages and winter wages. When I put my rental went up. Major roads, routine equipment rental, I deducted twenty-seven hundred dollars off of what I had budgeted for that, leaving in sixty-two hundred, sixty-six, sixty-seven dollar amount to be used with what we're planning on doing for the rest of the year. That other work, I, winter, winter, major road winter equipment went up from six thousand dollars budgeted to twenty-one thousand seventy dollars, but didn't be budgeted, but it's actually spent. Major road fund balance, twenty-seven thousand, five eighty-five in it, so it shows that there's a twelve hundred dollar use of fund balance. Minor roads, again, got thirty-six fifty from, allocated from the governor, and then we need to transfer another ten thousand dollars at a minimum in there to get us through the rest of the year for general fund. Page eight just goes into the wages and the equipment rental. Winter equipment rental went from seven thousand to eighteen thousand, nine thirty. Minor road equipment rental is going up, too, there's a bunch of things that we'll be doing on that road, on those roads, excuse me. It has a forty-six hundred and seventy-eight dollar amount revenue over expenses and a ten thousand, two eighty-nine fund balance in there. The rest of it, I think. Couple of things on page eleven. That they equal each other out, reducing sewer fund legal by two hundred and increasing the like insurance for pad, again, five hundred inspection fees increased, taking it out of sewer department cleaning. And that's all there is. The rest of it just shows where we are with different accounts. Overall, the budget looks really good. Considering each one of the accounts that should be in the whole area. I need a moment.
Make a motion, we approve the budget amendments.
Motion's been made.
Support.
Support. Bill Paul, both please.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Bankby?
Yes.
Maury?
Yes.
Thurlow?
Yes.
Horton?
Yes.
And we have a couple of resolutions to look at.
Resolution two oh one four oh three is directing Mr. Horton and myself to sign the Erie Street contract with M.D.O.
Make a motion, we approve resolution two zero one four S three for the Erie Street project.
Horton.
I'll make a motion that we approve. We have a call, both please.
Baldwin? Bankby?
Yes.
Maury?
Yes.
Thurlow?
Yes.
Horton?
Yes.
Okay, now you can do that.
Jackie, you want to go over the resolution two oh one four?
Yeah. We had a meeting here the other day with the county. Mr. Bankby and Mr. Maury attended the meeting. There are funds available from the Small Urban Program. This year, they're not exactly sure how many dollars are available, but on average, it's gonna be three hundred and seventy thousand dollars for. We removed from a rural area to an urban area, which really doesn't do us any favors. It's Gale Road from Hegel to Green, that's what the township's part is, and then all of the village of Goodridge, pretty much, down in fifteen to Groland and Brandon and Ortonville. Any roads that are federal aid eligible can apply for this money. We, after talking with Pete and Ethan, we put in a couple, three projects. One of them, I would recommend that we, we take out and cancel the CMEC money, which is clean air money. Curzley Street between Pontiac and Curz, or Erie Street between Pontiac and Curzley Creek. Our match money for that would be twelve thousand, three eleven. What we're doing with that is the bids for the project came in over budget, ten percent over budget, because of the asphalt cost. Each different layer of asphalt in the mix. So what I'm trying to do is see if they will give us forty-nine thousand, two forty-three for that project. I'm not sure that that's gonna fly, because it already is a project. But if we don't have to pay it out of the funds we have, possibly take it out of there. So that one, I would like to lead into the motion. The Hegel Road East project, we were allocated twenty thousand dollars back in two thousand and ten with a five thousand dollar match on top of that, to put sidewalk between Hegel Road, on Hegel Road between fifteen and Foxalo. Well, in the course of time, between two thousand and ten and now, prices have gone up considerably. The project, to help us out, I asked for thirty thousand dollars, which then there would be an eleven thousand dollar match, and thirty-six, approximately thirty-six five in engineering cost. After talking to Pete and Ethan, we determined that we probably could hire a local company to do it without the engineering cost as extensive as they have to be for M.D.O. project for a lot less. So I would like that one taken out of the resolution that we're going to pass on to the county. I don't know if Mr. Maury has anything he wants to say about it right now.
Well, after looking at the project, the sidewalk originally, we thought for best interest would be on the south side of Hegel Road. Well, after really getting into it, taking a good look at it, seven structures would have to be rebuilt. And those seven structures are quite costly. And it also looks like it'd be something like the bike path this way. And there's a couple of houses set pretty low, and if you build that sidewalk as high as a road, not a good thing for the front yard with water. So if we kind of postpone it and look at it, and put it on the north side, it may go up like this, but it's gonna come down slower. There's no structures. There'd be some ditching work to do there, maybe put pipe in and go right over the top of it. And that project would probably come in cheaper, and we're gonna have to pay just on this other, what we get free money. And we could set that up and probably do it maybe next year locally, get somebody come in, shoot it, miss dig, with all those things you gotta do. It would have to cross the road, but either way, one subdivision, you gotta cross the road. And it would be nice to have a sidewalk back there for those people. The shoulder's wide, but a sidewalk would be better, but I think if we want to spend our money wisely, we need to take a fair look at it. To do it the correct way, and I agree with Jackie, we should drop that second one out and work on the third one for now.
The third project, I'm hoping that the Erie Street project would give us money this year. And Hegel Road pathway was supposed to give us money this year, and if everyone's in agreement, we'll remove that. The Hegel Road West, we've been talking about that for a long time, from Seneca Street down to the bridge. If you turn down there, you know it's pretty of shape. The estimate for the project would be about a hundred and twenty thousand per millon resurface and do a little bit of curb repair and some drain repair. That project ended up number six on the list of six. I thought it was pretty good, but the first two projects were one and two. But that project, we probably wouldn't get the funds for that until two seventeen, so it may be something we have to look at to do a minor millon resurface before, just to stabilize the road a little bit. So we'll look at getting some prices and whether it would be disbursed or neck-budged or something, just to, sort of like what we did down at the other end of Hegel Road. We had an ASH asphalt come in, and they just more or less took the bums out of the road, this would. If we did something in the meantime. But this, this project would help the local downtown and stabilize everything. So I recommend leading that in. That's a twenty-four thousand dollar match. And what this resolution does is you know, the county and the state, that you're willing to subsidize that money for that.
So what you're saying is that the first option of the three is okay the way it's written, as far as numbers, or?
I would just, it, it's your wish, we would just take out Hegel Road East pathway project. I would take that out of there and then write the letter stating that we're gonna withdraw it. Your motion can be that you want to withdraw that project and approve resolution two fourteen oh four with the Erie Street project and the Hegel Road West project, if that's what you want.
Reason, one of the things that was odd about this year, you had to be shovel-ready, but they didn't know how much money it's gonna have. but they didn't know how much money it's going to have. If you didn't have a plan, then you couldn't be up there. So next year, or two-seventeen, there's supposed to be almost nine million dollars in this for these projects around the state, maximum of three-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand. But you have to be shovel-ready. She was the only one shovel-ready at the whole meeting of everybody, so I have to congratulate her on that because we have these programs and we do look ahead and we have some knowledge of what it's going to be. Who knows, they might come in and say, "Project uptown, they're going to give us the money and we're going to do it this year." Well, it wouldn't break my heart because it's getting pretty rough up there.
It is.
But it does slow traffic down. But I will tell you, once it's done, once it's done, you're going to look both ways before you cross the street. If you can't hear, you might get wrong over. Because when the roads are rough, it slows people down. I had a lady call and complain about Dutch Road the other day. Of course, she always does every year, just to... And I says, "I decided to leave them there for speed bumps because she has a white car." And I says, "Somebody on Dutch Road with a white car has been speeding." I mean, well, if you get a call, sometimes you've got to have a little fun.
You make me... I'll make a motion to approve, who's the motion? Resolution two-thousand-fourteen, I can't talk. Oh-four minus... Minus the third item or the second item, Higo Road East Pathway between M-15 and Fox Hollow, take that out of the resolution. So we're talking about the Erie Street and also the Higo Road West as being in the resolution of two-thousand-fourteen-oh-four. And I make a motion...
Support.
Roll call both please.
Baldwin.
Yes.
McAbby.
Yes.
Maury.
Yes.
Seroli.
Yes.
Horton.
Yes.
Any additional public comments? This is your opportunity. This is Alan.
Theresa Young, I don't mean to sound disrespectful, but I'm kind of feeling this green infrastructure, it's a great concept, but I also think it's a great stall tactic, and I think it's an even better campaign strategy. I feel like a guinea pig with this, and I'm not comfortable with it. You know, I look forward to seeing what you can put together, but, and again, I don't mean to sound disrespectful, but when you forget stuff and you don't have a presentation and show us exactly how much you can possibly slow the water down, it really makes me nervous because council has had nearly three years to seek out alternative solutions, and they waited until the engineering report came out to do something about it. And I strongly believe it's a stall tactic, and I think you guys are going to run with it as your campaign strategy, how you're trying to save everybody money while the rest of us are flooding out. And the other thing you keep saying is you want to see all these homes that flood. Well, they don't know half the homes that flood. They don't. They've said it at meetings that they, you know, are going to spend all this money for two homes. So that's another concern, that you might not know all the homes that are having issues within a wide area. The other thing I want to know is when you guys intend to tell us, when you met with the Drain Commissioner on the twenty-fifth of February, there was a third alternative mentioned that could save taxpayers nearly eighty percent without going green? I'm wondering what you plan on sharing it with us.
You know more than we do.
If you elaborate, I have no idea what you're talking about.
Well, I don't have the paperwork with me that worked, unfortunately, and I would like to talk about the dam because I actually spoke with Luke Trumbull today, too. And I think some of the facts that were mentioned today might be a little mixed up, but again, I don't have my notes, so I can't bring them here. But basically, there's a third option that if the dam were removed and they could run a pipe from the golf course, and don't quote me on this because I don't have my notes, and it could take Green Ridge Estates and the golf course water and put it all in the mill pond. And it kind of made sense because when I read the article last week, it was said that the pond is a political untouchable, and I'd like to know why. If we're considering green infrastructure for fixing drain issues, why aren't we going to consider it for the dam? I mean, at least consider it, you know?
Green infrastructure can increase property value when it's installed on your property. As far as green infrastructure for fixing the dam, the whole idea there would be that you would have to eliminate the dam.
That's, I'm not talking about fixing the dam, I'm talking about if that were a possibility, I mean, at least to address it and to talk about it, at least propose all the options available. Why are you talking when I'm talking?
You're not supposed to be talking to her in the audience.
Well, then, you're not the, are you council president?
Stop there. No, not at all. He is.
You're rude.
Yes, I've had enough. It's been a long time. And you guys lie, you lie, you mislead the public.
Give you three minutes or not.
Are you president? Give me three minutes.
We're here talking, we're going to get more information, and both, at the end, we'll find out what is the best solution for everybody.
Well, that's, I would like the all, everything that is suggested or proposed, I think we should all hear what those are. We may not all like them, but I think we should be entitled to know what those options are.
You'll have an opportunity when we find out what's going on with the meeting, if these guys are going to, how they're going to get a lot of information about the water and all that sort of thing. And our friend here is going to give more information. And we're going to kind of put things together, and everybody's going to find out what we think is the best solution, and it'll go from there. Okay? Anyone else?
Down M-216, I don't know, this thing's on and I...
You can hear it.
No point drive. Part of what Theresa says I have to agree with, the part about feeling in the dark. I happen to know that a couple council members, two or three of them, have been working their butts off behind the scenes, trying to gather information and get things scheduled, and I pat them on the back for this. I think they're really serving the public interest well. I'm not going to name names because the heads are going to swell, so we won't do that. But just recognize that your efforts are recognized. However, because you're doing something behind the scenes, the public sometimes gets the idea that, hey, there's a lot of stuff going on under the table, in the bathroom, in the dark, whatever. We're in the dark. We're like the mushroom factory, you know? Keep us in the dark, feed us all the crack. That doesn't work. That has never worked. It will never work. I'm trying to get away from all this divisiveness in our village, and I see an opportunity here. We've got two really big issues with that dam and the Weloak Watkins Drain, where if we can all pull together on the same end of the rope, I think we can make some exciting stuff happen. And with Tammy's help, I think it can happen. I don't feel very good when I look out at my end of the pond and see I'm now on a mud flat, so I'm not on water anymore. And I called the township and said, "How come my SEV went up by twenty-five percent?" Well, the average was an eighteen percent increase. You got twenty-five because you got one of the nicer homes. I says, "Have you seen the pond lately?" I says, "You know..." She says, "Well..." I said, "You know, I paid a hundred grand just to be on the water on this lot, and I'm on a mud flat now." She made me feel good, though. She says, "You know, I, you're not evaluating that hundred grand anymore. Your lot is only worth twenty-five grand." Oh, I said, "That makes me feel great." So now I know where that money went, you know? Part of that two-hundred grand that I lost is on the mud flats there. So let me tell you, guys, as soon as you can get any water back in that dam, back in that pond of a salphin, that appreciate it, it's not just me, it's my neighbors on both sides, Clarence's, you know, he's talking about dredging. I said, "Good luck with that one, you know, go to DEQ when they get done laughing." You know, these guys are, not as bad as DNR, but close second, trying to get, you know, because the first thing they're going to say is, "Where are you going to put the mud? Where are you going to put the stuff you dredge?" You know, and yet, besides, it's a wetland, so you can't touch it, right? Meanwhile, we're all building docks, and we have boats and all that other stuff, you know? So anyway, I guess I'm not going to whine about it. There isn't much I can do about it except wait and hope that we're successful. But if we do have a plan and we had a timetable, that would go a long way, I think, you know? And that's, I think what Theresa's saying, I've been trying to do something for three years on the Weloak Watkins. And I guess she feels like she's battling, but the boat ain't moving, you know? And sometimes if you have a plan, if we can get together on a plan and put a timetable on it and say, "These are our target dates." They aren't necessarily deadlines, they're just targets because we don't know. We don't know if the money's going to be there, we don't know this, we don't know that. But if we know what our target is, then everybody can start moving in that direction. You know, and Doug mentioned fundraiser for the park, and hell, we need a fundraiser for the drain, and a fundraiser for the dam, and, oh, anyway, I've said enough. But thanks for your efforts, guys, but please, share your plans with all of us so we can help, you know, so we can all get on the same page. Thank you.
I'm Charles Cox, I live over in the Hawthorne Ridge area. I just, on a note of positive brevity, I just want to thank the council for getting those traffic signs up out there. I think it'll make a big difference. I know it'll help some of the elder folks, including myself, safe when we walk along that area. And also, thanks for taking care of the roads out that way. I appreciate that very much. So thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's nice to hear good comments. Hold cell for it.
Hi. Katie Benner. I'm a person that, my most common about the park and rest program. I kind of have to ask, it doesn't seem like anybody really took the time to go through what I presented at the last meeting. If any of you had, you would have realized that it wasn't just an idea about, "I want to make the park nicer and give me some money." It was a two-to-three-year plan for fundraising completely handled on my end. I had, if you gentlemen remember, I told you at the meeting that the Lion Club has unanimously agreed to start a fund, to start collecting, like a park, build a park fund to start funding some of it. And the thing is, this is one of the only positive things we have in our community that we all could be working together on today instead of keep dismissing it, sitting on our hands. I took my one-and-a-half-year-old to this park the other day. I could not even set him on the ground. There was shattered glass everywhere. We live in Goodrich, where do we live? I mean, come on, if we can't step up and make a plan to work together to make this park something, we're all going to be living with basically a dumpster in the middle of our community. We've got to try. And if nobody can even take the time to pick up a phone, except for Mr. McAbby, who has spent a lot of time reaching out to me to hear more because he knows it's something that can be great for our community. It can be great for our property values, great for our families, our children. It can generate business revenue, and there is so much possibility, and I'm willing to take on the work. All I need is you guys to say if you're going to work with me. That's all I'm looking for. And it's like I can't even get a phone call, like I can't, we can't move anything if nobody's going to start trying, so that's all.
Thank you. Okay, you want to forward any comments?
Yes. An antage that I found quite useful. It's easy to win an argument if you're not handicapped by a knowledge of the facts. That seems to be what goes on here quite a bit. I take it very personally, not from a point of being on the council, because I expect to get a certain amount of flack on that, like Lees and what I think I'm trying to accomplish. But to be called a liar is out of control, as far as I'm concerned. There's nothing to substantiate that anyone on this council is lying to anyone. We take the time, we take the effort to try to get something done, and all we get, for instance, is misinformation regarding green infrastructure. It was reported that the golf course was not a member of the Weloak and Watkins Drain District, and would have to come up with a private agreement with the village. In fact, according to Fleece and Van de Brink Engineering Report, the upper area of the drainage district is comprised of a golf course, woodlands, open space, residential properties. I'm sure that Mr. Wright is aware of this fact, so his comments were either misunderstood or misquoted. So everything about that is untrue and not factual, but you may believe it if you choose. That's fact out of the report. The other thing is removing the mill pond and dam to open up the possibility of drainage patterns returning to pre-dam conditions, implying a likely improvement in flooding issues. Again, according to Fleece and Van de Brink's Engineering Report, therefore, it appears that the mill pond is not contributing to the current flooding issues as long as the sluice gate on the existing fifteen-inch pipe crossing Ridge Road to the golf course is closed. So you may take down the dam, you may take away the pond, but it's not going to affect one way or another the flooding, according to the engineering people. So these are the facts. As far as Act Forty, as Tammy said, it's proven in other communities that they use Act Forty with rain gardens and get funding for it and go forward with it and so forth. If there's other districts or commissions that don't agree with that, then you have a difference as interpretation. This is nineteen fifty-six when this was written. I don't believe that there was much conversation about rain gardens in nineteen fifty-six. So again, interpretation. We're trying to go forward with as many alternatives as we can, so we don't spend a million dollars. We are also looking at the same time, there's a comment of someone that sent a tweet or something into the Flint paper saying, "Well, why don't you go green on the dam?" Well, we're not, we're trying not to do a multi-million dollar fix to the dam. We're looking at other alternatives. We can chew gum and walk at the same time, so we can look at the drainage and we can look at the dam. Those are the two biggest elephants in the room for us, and that's what we're trying to do. Like I said, let's keep this as a business sense. Let's not get into personalities and accusations of pointing to people and saying, "You're lying to us, you're lying to me." I work, these people here work a hell of a lot harder than I do. All I do is paper. These people are out there busting about three o'clock in the morning. I know that Baldwin's going from pillar to post, talking to the people in the golf course. We're trying to get the people to go out from the golf course with us, with Tammy, to meet with the people in Ingham County. Fantastic success with rain gardens. They just got an approval from the people in Lansing to go forward with another one. And the commissioner there said, "Yes, as soon as I get the final okay, I'm going to develop a series of rain..." So this isn't something that fell out of the sky. We accept the fact, we were not that smart. But no one else was here either. People that had the problems weren't that smart to come to us and say, "You know what? There's rain gardens and there's green infrastructure. Why aren't you people looking at it?" So, all right, I'll accept the fact, we didn't know. Now we do know, and we're pursuing that as quickly as possible. So, you know, I don't care if you don't like our politics, but don't get personal.
I was at the meeting at Mr. Wright's office, and all I know is what I heard, and maybe I didn't comprehend things all that well. This meeting was about planning, it was about options. They listened to the various options that we gave them after their engineering firm came up with their ideas. This is about what works best and which costs the least. At the end of that meeting, one of the questions I asked, which didn't make the press, was timeline. This green infrastructure, is this going to delay things? I believe he told me, no, that these were just one of the many options, a normal process. Pretty sure that's what he told me. Pretty sure that's what he told me. As far as an 80% reduction, we did talk about putting the mill pond back to a creek. But unless you have some crystal ball that you know what kind of sediment is in that mill pond, so you can say how much it would cost to extract that sediment, which does have to come out, how can you come up with 80%? How can you make these comments without even being there? And I'm sorry, if my voice is a little upset and a little shaky, I put a lot of time into this and I take this personally.
So do I.
So, well, and rightfully so. But I'm doing everything that I can to represent everybody out here, because everybody out here is going to pay for it. Everybody out here is going to say, if it doesn't work and we get one of these four, we get one of these catastrophic rain events and everybody floods and you flood again, they're going to say, why did you let them put in a small pipe? I'm trying to look out for everybody.
But won't they say the same thing if a rain garden fails and they say, why did you put it in a garden?
I think I said this is part of the planning process.
Well, exactly.
When she is through with her planning process, if we believe and Mr. Wright believe it's questionable, we'll have somebody else look at it. I will do everything that I can to make sure that whatever she is proposing is as good an option as we can have. And I'll take a deep breath and say, I didn't mean to get too upset.
There's really this whole thing that if you were to remove the dam, it might just be.
I was going to say.
Point of order, we're in council comment right now, so Rick, if you wanted.
Well, Tammy, I think all we need to do is for you to get more information, I know you're in the process of doing that. And until we get that, then we'll get a better idea of how these rain gardens will work, you know, I think we got a good idea from the previous meeting. In fact, rain gardens is something brand new to us and there's proof and a pudding from other communities that it works, and so I think it's something that we definitely have to look at, that's going to solve a lot of our water problems. Far Mrs. Allen, she knows that Mr. Wright at the Drain Commission is going to get to us whenever he feels like he can do it in his first comment, and there was 30 some villages that have problems and we were not on the top, so that's going to be a matter of time if in fact that's the way we go. The dam is something that's been going on for quite a long time. We finally have people looking at that, trying to make a good decision as to what to do, how to do it, if we need to do anything. It's been there for 100 years, there's nothing that tells me it's not going to go out another couple of years. So if they're going to, they're looking at that. So we got two or three things going all at one time, it'd be a lot simpler if we had one, but we don't, we have about three or four. And to be able to commute to everybody what's going on on a day-to-day basis would be nice, but that's not the way it works. But we try to keep everybody informed, that's what the means are for Parson, and in doing so, keep everybody educated about that, what happens next, here's what we need to do, and then that's something that the, that this board has to recommend, to make motions and talk to the people that make those decisions of fixing things that need to be done. We're an old community, we've been here 150 some years, there are a lot of things that have been going on, the mill pond's been there forever, the dam's been there forever. I think some of the infrastructure, Mrs. Allen knows already, that's been there forever also. You can't fix everything all at one time, but at least it's on the agenda we do talk about. Hopefully over the next two or three years, the board makes things straight around, probably do members, but it'll look a lot different.
Well, did we, did we, at least one of the plans was a combination of drain and rain gardens? So it's not exclusively rain gardens?
Coming out of Mrs. Allen's backyard.
Okay, so let it through as a combination.
When that drain was moved to create three locks, which is not in our hands, it's not our drain, they hooked an 18 to a 12. We all know that's not going to work. Why they did that, nobody owns up to it, but there's an 18 going into a 12. If the rain gardens go in, which I think will work, you put a 24 going out of there and restrict the 18 coming out of the golf course down to a 12, that will take the water. That's why the water comes up in the back. You can't pour 18 ounces of beer in 12, it's gone. And that's what's happening there, there's so much force, it can't keep up. But you get down the road where the 24 is, it's taking water. Even when we had the big rain, that water was going down that drain, but it was coming down the hill this peak, but it was going down the drain. The drain was working down there, but to.
Are you talking Saturday it was working?
No, when we had the flood down where they were flooded, where it knocked our basement out, where the water came down the hill, both of those drains worked. Mark was there, one of the neighbors was there, people in the way, I was at the dam. That drain was working, is working fine, but with that type of event, that house will flood again. If you look at it, it's all this way. There's just no way you really saved it unless you did away with the basement, quit on stilts, which is the way it is. It was built sometime in the 40s. I think they'll do better now that they're not hooked into that drain, because you hook into a drain and you get enough pressure, they were hooked into the 12 instead of the 24, that wall, that swells up. Wherever there's, it can go water or oil run backwards and it did, it ran up the drain, it ran up the laundry dogs. That's how I figured out it was illegal when she said that. And as far as the park goes, we all have kids and the kids are the ones that are going down there, they pulled the covers off the lights, I've been told tonight, and broke the bulbs. We had steel covers up there and they're screwed on with screws, so the only way you can get up there and they're up about nine feet is stand on a table or put two tables together with a screwdriver and they broke it. I was also informed tonight they pulled the drain covers off, some of my boys will be in there in the morning. So if you see vandalism going down in the park, you see kids you don't know what you think they might be up to no good, they belong to the people in this community. If you think they're up, give them a call. But the park is supposed to be closed, we put the barrels there, they throw them out and they go in. In the park, I like to keep it closed until we're done digging. Hopefully we'll be digging the first of man. And hopefully it's just what Mark and I think it is.
If I may. I want to bring up a slightly different thing and I'm going to ask you a question, I don't know if it's proper, I want to say this, I think one thing that we don't hear with the dam is that the drains issue is a health problem. The skin rotations and the pictures that I've seen in, what could the, could you elaborate on that just a little and I know this is supposed to be us talking.
Relative to the dam or relative to?
Health, health risks.
Relative to the dams?
Well, everything.
Or relative to all of it? Well, relative to the dam, the sediment buildup is going to be contaminated, so you're going to have to spend money sampling it, you're going to have to then dispose it properly, you're going to have to have it anywhere you can, there's a lot of expenses that, outside of just removing the dam and letting the flow go back, and it's, there's no way that it's going to be 80% of the cost to fix it. So, even if it were a politically popular thing to do for the homeowners, not for the people on council or anything else, for the homeowners, because it really comes down to the people that have property along there as to what they think about it. This has been the issue of dam removal all over the state, a lot of dams are slated to be removed right now, but when, once you start digging up that sediment, now you have an exposure risk, you have to deal with that as well. As far as the drainage and flooding and rain gardens and green infrastructure, our nation's water, the number one source of pollution in our nation's water is from runoff and it's being exposed to everything from pesticides to E. coli from the geese, to a whole raft of pollutants, and then it's gradual, chronic exposure over time. So when that water is going into what would be considered a biological uptake, a rain garden, it's going to be treated as much as what you would in a wetland, there's going to be some natural treatment before it's released.
I probably should have phrased it like this, if this was a health, if this was approached as more of a health issue, funding, funding would be slightly different and we might move up ahead of other things, other projects.
Okay, do you want to keep this?
Yeah, yeah, that's true. That was it, that was it, I just, you know, I think we need to.
I think the, I think the idea, I'd like some of the council members have already talked to Tammy about it, about the flyer, so that it goes to the community, people in the community that have better understanding, so we're not doing anything under the table or behind everybody's back, right? And it would be things that if you, if you would read some of the tweets and everything else that came in for some of the papers, like the Flint paper, that said, we can't have rain gardens because everyone's yard is small, you can't get rain gardens in everybody's yard because it would take up their whole backyard, there would be no picnicking, there would be nothing there. I think the explanation would be, and I'm not trying to steal their thunder, but I think the explanation would be that you stop the water from getting in the backyard to begin with, the flow of water. So we're not asking to put a rain garden in every backyard in the community. So I think explaining things like that in the flyer, when you see these kind of comments that come in to the paper, I think it helps to understand, because right now everybody is just going every way that they want to, to say, oh yes, what did I hear, what did I think I hear, what do I want to hear?
That's true. Well, specific concepts, we're not quite used to all that. Well, I don't have anything else.
Make a motion with adjourn.